Okay, we have Artie, so I'll bring him in.
And then add.
And Artie has been promoted. Let's see, Paul B. No. Is Paul B?
No. Nope. Paul Alpert, Paul A. And then Adam Block, Adam B. Maybe Adam and Paul are together and they're Paul B. now.
I don't see, but your first person is Corey, so I'm gonna go ahead and promote him.
Let me, let me call Paul.
Do we have quorum? Oh, Paul's here.
Oh, Paul, okay.
So we have quorum.
And then David Grasiano, I don't see him, so.
Adam is the only other.
Hi, Paul, long time no see. How are you?
Good.
All right, and so your applicant is up and so is Adam. I think you have a full quorum, correct, Natasha?
Um, I believe so. Adam's here. Perfect. Okay. So, I'll start. Good afternoon and welcome. I'm Natasha Spata, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I'm calling the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four Planning Board Meeting to Order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a virtual manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast to the town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom and by the Needham Channel and is being recorded for publication later viewing and administrative purposes. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. I'll call the roll for the record. When I call your name, please say you're present. Paul Alpert?
Present.
Adam Block? Yeah, I think he said present. Here, Artie Crocker, great.
Frozen.
Justin McCollin?
Present.
Great. And Lee Newman is here today. Alex Plea is not with us today. Um, so our agenda today is we have, um, the number, the first thing is we have a decision on major project site plan special permit for PEX Health and Fitness at fourteen fifty one Highland Ave. We have two de minimis changes, one for Blue on Highland and one for the Wingate Development. Um, the, the Blue on Highland is for change in facade, Wingate is to reduce units. And then Board Acknowledgement of Change of Ownership for Wingate Development is number four. Then we have an A and R plan for three twenty one Cartwright Road, uh, meeting minutes, report from Planning Director and Board Members, and then correspondence. So, um, with that, uh, we have the decision for, um, the Major Project Site Plan Special Permit. So, um, Lee, I know that Paul, I believe you sent comments and Lee, you picked them up. Is that correct?
Yes, I think there were a couple of just minor typos that I've incorporated down to the final. I didn't update the packets online, but I did incorporate Paul's comments.
Okay, so were there any other comments from the Planning Board members? I don't see a hand up.
In that case, shall I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, I move that we, so with regard to, um, uh, application number twenty twenty four dash oh three P E X or PEX Health and Fitness, or fourteen fifty Highland Avenue. Uh, I move that we grant the requested special permit under section three point two point two of the bylaw to operate a personal fitness center establishment in the Center Business District. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section three point two point two of the bylaw for more than one non-residential use on a lot, where such uses are not detrimental to each other and are in compliance with all other requirements of our bylaw. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section three point two point two of the bylaw to operate accessory uses incidental to the principal use, namely office use and fitness and nutrition consultants. And lastly, I move that we grant the requested special permit under section five point one point one point six of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements of section five point one point two required parking, section five point one point three parking plan and design requirements, all which will be subject to and with the benefits of the, uh, plan modifications, conditions, and limitations set forth in the decision, which we have reviewed a draft.
Second.
Okay, so Paul made the motion. Thank you very much. That was, um, a lot. And, um, Adam, Adam seconded. So, um, all in favor, I'm gonna go through person by person, right? Because we're on Zoom, so, um, say aye, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Adam Block?
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Barely.
Barely, yeah. He said aye, I think. Uh, Artie Crocker?
Aye.
And Justin McCollin?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passed unanimously. Um, so, thank you very much.
And now I move that we, uh, um, adopt the decision that was in our packet with the two minor typographical modifications.
Second.
So motion by Paul, second by Artie. Again, we'll take, we'll call here. Um, all in favor, say aye. So, Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Justin McCollin?
Aye.
Okay, again, the motion passed unanimously, so I think we're all set rightly with that decision.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Great. So then, um, going to the second one, the second agenda item, which is the de minimis change from, um, Major Project Site Plan Special Permit to what? Two zero zero five dash zero five Blue on Highland, um, regarding a change to the facade. So, um.
The applicant, the applicant is not present, but essentially this was just to basically, um, to put a door, um, revise a door entry and to actually, um, allow for the bathroom to be placed within the facility. And the building inspector has approved this and the Design Review Board has approved it. So this is, this is basically a draft decision that just makes those minor, um, modifications to your earlier decision.
Okay, is there anyone, um, any questions from any of the Planning Board members?
As long as, I mean, as long as the fire department, they have access and the, but nothing changes below that regarding that and handicap accessibility and so forth. I don't have any questions as long as that, that meets those requirements.
It's been, it's been reviewed by the building inspector and he's fine with it as it relates to the code.
And with, and with, uh, um.
I'm just gonna make, um, one comment, which is not, I, I'm, I'm not asking to do anything with this particular one, but for future. Because I noticed that in the request, they say there'll be added an additional bathroom in the new space. And one will be for male use and one will be for female use. And, uh, I'm sure that there are bathrooms in the original space. Probably one male and one female, and I'm just throwing out to the board the concept that maybe, um, where we've got multiple bathrooms in a facility going forward that we consider requiring a unisex bathroom in addition. Just something that I thought of when I saw that they were, they were saying that they were adding a bathroom and therefore it's gonna be one male and one female.
Well, one thing, Paul, just to let you know that the state is reviewing the gender free bathrooms. So right now.
Which is basically what I'm suggesting.
Right, the, so you, you can, so the plumbing code right now, it's still male and female, and that's why they're doing it that way. But, um, you can get, we've been getting variances for gender free, so making them all gender free. Um, so that's something that I think we can, um, recommend to the building inspector to say this is might be some, you know, that's something that they can pursue, or hopefully they'll change that rules so that you don't have to be so stringent on one or the other. But yeah, I think that's a really good point.
Okay.
Um, I see that none of them are, are handicap accessible. And I know that they have one in the main space, and I know that they're constricted with space, but that's another thing to make sure that if there is space, they should try their best to make it as universally accessible as possible. But I know that this is really like a very narrow space, so I think, um, having two is.
And actually, it's been re, you know, it's been reviewed by the building inspector. This was, were changes he, you know, had requested and the plans are consistent with that, so.
I said it, it's, I'm not commenting on it for this particular request.
Okay, thank you.
To keep it in mind for, for discussing with the building inspector.
I wanted to raise the issue for the future.
Yeah.
Shall we?
Okay, so with that, uh, my first, uh, motion is.
Adam Chair, you have a hands raised.
The de minimis change.
Hold on one second.
Adam Chair, you have a hands raised by Scott Drago.
Right, so unless they are part of this, this is not a public hearing.
He is. I think he is.
Okay, he, he didn't respond to me that he wanted to attend, so I didn't add him.
Okay, his hand just, um, the hands raised was closed.
Okay. Um, if, if he wants to be brought over, um, if he wants to raise his hand again, we can bring him over, but I think Paul was about to make a motion. And Justin, you didn't have any other questions?
You raised his hand again, Scott. Again, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, uh, Scott Drago just raised his hand again. Do you want me to promote?
Can you bring him in?
Yes, I'll promote him to as a panelist.
Perfect, thank you. Hello.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody.
Hi, good afternoon. So I assume, yeah, you wanted to clarify something.
Yeah, yeah. So I just, I didn't know if I was gonna be a participant to this as well. So, um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify on the gender neutral bathroom. Um, the handicap accessible bathroom in the main, uh, restaurant is gender neutral as well. Um, so that would constitute a little bit as to that, Paul, um, you know, being a general neutral, neutral bathroom. Um, I did ask, um, Joe about that being, um, when we had the one bathroom in the new space, that was going to be gender neutral. And based on the plumbing code, uh, he said, I do need two bathrooms, and he said one would be considered men's and one would be considered women's. So I just wanted to clarify that just to make sure. Um, and then the handicap accessible, um, the front doorway change, uh, with the Design Review Board was, um, partly to do to, um, being handicap accessible, um, just in case somebody wanted, was having a, a private event. And instead of going through the bar area, which can get pretty tight sometimes, we wanted to actually have that access allowable, um, ADA compliant, to be able to come in the front door of the second location, uh, the, or the, the additional location to make it easier on somebody to come in that way.
Great.
Great, thank you so much for that clarification.
Sure.
Any other questions? Adam, do you have any questions about this change?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Drago. So Paul, you were gonna make a motion.
My first motion was that we accept this as a de minimis change.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Paul, seconded by Justin. All in favor, say aye. Uh, Justin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so that's unanimous.
And my second motion is that we grant the, the requested modifications to the decision.
Second.
Second.
And so motion by Paul, seconded by Justin, I think, Adam. Um, and so all in favor, say aye. So, um, Adam?
Aye.
Walk. Okay, Justin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Okay, great. So that, and I, the chair, so that unanimously passed as well. So thank you very much. Mr. Drago and, um, are, Lee, are you all set?
I am.
Okay. Thank you all. Um, okay, so the third item is a de minimis change also, and this is for Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Number, uh, ninety-three dash three Wingate Development, um, at sixty-six Kendrick Street regarding a reduction of independent living units, no change to the affordable units.
I think that, I think that David Feldman is, should be present.
David Feldman is here. I see him in our Zoom room.
So why don't you bring him over?
He's here.
He's here.
He just has to, he just has to turn his, on and, um, unmute himself. Hello, Mr. Feldman.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So, um, Lee, do you wanna explain it or?
Well, I won't, why don't you let David explain what he's proposing to do here?
So we originally, uh, got approval in May of, uh, twenty twenty-three for seventy-two independent units. Um, we've since, through plan development, um, have decided to reduce that number of units from seventy-two to sixty-three, eliminating some studios and some smaller one bedrooms and creating some larger, um, two-bedroom units. Uh, no, no change to square footage, no squared, no change to elevation. And we're keeping the affordables as is. All the other conditions on the, on the special permit from May sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, stay in place.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the Planning Board members?
Are these units just, uh, larger units then? You've got nine fewer units and they're just, uh, larger?
Yeah, that's correct.
And what's the average size before and with this current plan?
So the average size before ranged between, um, five hundred and twenty square feet to, uh, twelve hundred square feet. Now, now the average size is between nine hundred and thirty-five and sixteen hundred.
Got it, got it, got it. That makes sense. I have no other questions. I'm fine with, uh, the minimum nature.
Madam Chair, what about, what about, what about the affordable unit sizes? Is there any, is there any change? What square footers are they? And which, which square footers were they before? What square footers are they now?
So because the affordables have to be a representation of the unit mix, the affordable units actually, uh, sizes increase as well.
And what is that number? Do you remember?
It, it, I, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it'll, it'll increase, uh, proportionately, uh, by the, the unit types. Because we have more two bedrooms, so there'll be more two bedrooms available for the affordable as well.
But what was the square footage before?
It ranged between like five hundred and sixty square feet to, I think, eleven or twelve hundred square feet. Now it's from nine hundred square feet to sixteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, but that's, uh, yeah, but that's what the non-affordable units are.
It's, it's all, it's, it's all in totality.
It's a mix, Artie. They have to meet the average.
I understand it's a mix. I object that. I understand that. So are you saying, Mr. Feldman, are you saying that those square footage units will be the same range as the non-affordable?
Correct, correct. We, we can't, we can't, we can't hold out smaller units just for affordable. That's illegal. We wouldn't do that. It has to be, um, a representation of the unit mix.
Mr. Feldman, will we be getting new plans to?
Yes, there, there are plans. I think there were revised floor plans in your package.
The revised ones are in the packet, okay. I, I saw some in the packet. I thought they were the originals. Sorry, I apologize. Any other questions already?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Paul, any questions?
No.
Justin, any questions?
No, I'm satisfied of the de minimis change.
Okay.
So I move that we accept this as a de minimis change.
Second.
Second.
Adam, you're too slow today.
So Paul made the motion and then, um, Justin slash Adam, Justin seconded, um. So all in favor, say aye. So Adam?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Okay, and I, the chair, so, um, motion passed unanimously.
And now I move that we, um, that we accept the requested modifications.
I give that to you, Adam.
For the decision.
Yeah, Adam, Adam, come on.
Second.
Paul made the motion, Adam seconded. All in favor, say aye, starting with, um, Paul?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so it's unanimous again. So thank you very much, Mr. Feldman. And, um, Lee, are you all set with this one?
I am, but why don't we have Mr. Feldman stay around for the next item on our agenda so he can just up, update the board. This is basically an acknowledgement of a change of ownership. Um, you know, under our, our, under our decision that we issued, um, basically the, the permit was issued to Wingate Development Corporation. Um, and if they decided to, um, uh, change the ownership to another entity, um, they were allowed to do that with the notification from the board, with the notice from the current owner, um, acknowledging the change. And then a note, then a basically an acknowledgement, I think, from the person who was buying the facility that they have read all the prior decisions and they were, um, agreeing to live under its terms. So those documents are just kind of provided to you um, in the package and I included that as an agenda item. So you were aware of it and since David's here, in case you have any questions, you could ask him directly.
Right, so are there any questions on the?
Nope, straightforward.
No, David, David, are you, uh, relative of Richard?
No, no, no relation.
So it's just coincidental?
I was on the council, I also have, happens to be a Feldman and, and that's also no relation. We're cornering the market on Feldmans, apparently.
Justin, any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, Artie, any questions?
Welcome.
Okay, so with that, um, what do we need to, do we need to vote on this as well?
No, I think, I just wanted it to be formally on the agenda to acknowledge the transfer.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Feldman, and, um, I think we're all set with this agenda item.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is an A and R plan, uh, by Ma, um, Majory Pine is the petitioner. It's a property located at three twenty-one Cartwright Road.
Yes, you guys, it's earlier signed and A and R, uh, maybe, can you bring Paul over on this if he's on the Zoom?
Paul Feldman or Paul B?
Paul B.
Paul B, okay.
A surveyor from Field Resources.
Non-Feldman.
Non-Feldman, right. So I'll let him come over so he can at least hear what I'm saying.
You just brought Paul Feldman overly.
It's, um, definitely the one doing it. Um, yeah, we need Paul B. Paul Feldman, nice to see you, but we need Paul B.
Um, is David Feldman's matter done?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That's why I was standing by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see everybody.
Nice to see you. So we, we have Paul B. here.
We do. Sorry about that. We're just turning on all the associated buttons.
Okay, so, okay, we, will you, go, go ahead, Paul. I'll let you take the lead.
I mean, it's kind of a, this one's kind of a quick. Um, after we got the prior A and R approved, um, you know, we sent the stuff back to the client and after talking with counsel or family or whatever, they decided, oh, you know what, maybe we should have made that lot a different shape and different size. So they didn't record the prior A and R and are just essentially modifying it to reissue with a different shape of the cutout parcel that they were going to retain.
In the packet, we only, we only have, I think, the new plan. We don't have a copy of the old plan.
The old plan is essentially was not executed. I mean, you guys signed it, but we would never.
Be helpful. I get that. I just, it would be helpful to see what the comparison is. What's the difference between the previous carve-out and this carve-out?
Um, the previous carve-out was like one point five acres. This is now a two, just over two acre carve-out.
Oh, got it.
Lee, what, did you have any concerns with this?
No, this, we, we reviewed this plan internally and it's, uh, it's fine.
Yep. I'll just comment that, that, uh, the requirement for an A and R plan is basically, um, uh, that the lots have adequate frontage, which they both do. They did before, they still do. Um, clearly, they, they both meet our zoning requirements for acreage and we have previously discussed and, and passed on the issues, uh, that we had about the roadway. So, um, you know, there's really, we would have no justification for denying this request.
Agreed.
Okay, any questions from Justin or Artie?
Nope, all set for, all clear on the side.
So we accept the, uh, the revised A and R plan for, um.
Okay, so, uh, motion made by Paul, seconded by Justin. Um, it happened so fast that I.
How much caffeine did you have?
Yeah, Justin, I think, Justin.
I'm still drinking my caffeine, Paul.
I, I guess you, you like lightning on the buzzer today.
Well, yeah, Justin should easily try, either try for jeopardy or family funeral, I wish.
So, okay, so with that, um, any questions, comments? Not all in favor, say aye. Um, Adam?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so all, um, motion passed unanimously. So, um, thank you very much, Paul B.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Paul.
Okay, so the next thing is, um, meeting minutes from October fifteenth. Um, any, we have the meeting minutes from October fifteenth and from the twenty-ninth, I believe. Is that right, Lee?
Yes, fifteenth and, and the twenty-ninth.
Okay, um, any questions on any of the, let's go the, through the fifteenth first? No questions? Where's?
I move adoption. I move adoption of the minutes of October fifteen.
Second.
So, motion made, uh, by Adam, Paul seconded, all in favor, say aye. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Justin McCollin?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so those meeting minutes were passed unanimously and then the ones from October twenty-ninth?
I moved adoption of the minutes of October twenty-nine.
Second.
And so the Adam made the motion, Justin seconded, all in favor, say aye. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Justin McCollin?
Aye.
And I, the chair, so, um, they, motion passed unanimously. Okay, so that's for the meeting minutes. Um, next item is a report from the Planning Director and Board Members. So Lee, do you wanna get us started?
Okay, sure. Um, I'll let maybe Artie take the lead on this. We're, the first meeting of a large house study committee, um, is, has been scheduled for tomorrow. Um, and so it's gonna be our first meeting and I think we hope to basically accomplish a couple of different things at that meeting. Um, basically to introduce everybody to each other and their reasons for servicing on the board, to make people familiar, um, with the scope of work and the timeline that we're gonna be following. Um, and to give people, um, an introduction and to, in terms of what the current regulatory framework is under our zoning, uh, so that we have a, you know, a reasonable, uh, an understanding of what the rules are currently that we're going to be examining. Uh, Artie, do you wanna add some more to that?
Well, I think you covered most of it, but, um, it'll be interesting to see. I mean, we'll, we'll be going around, around the tables multiple times, you know, getting people's feelings of what they think we should be looking at. You know, we all have our thoughts of what, what, how we should, what we should be looking at. And then we'll talk about, you know, do we, do we wanna, we wanna break out into some type of working groups to examine different parts of, different parts of the, uh, the decision-making process. And so we'll, we'll be looking at that and so it'll be, it'll be interesting to see what people have to say. Uh, tomorrow night, it'll be interesting to see what, you know, everyone, we come to it with our little bit of a bias in ourselves. But it'll be clear that our job is to kind of remove our bias as much as possible and examine all the, all the, all the items that we can, every, every metric we can possibly examine and come to a decision. And we're hoping, I mean, I, I'm hoping to have something ready for a town meeting in October. We, we do have a report and do on May, so that'll, that's essentially the timeline I'm looking at right now. And the goal is to kind of meet that timeline, but, but more specifically, the goal is to do, do something that is to create a bylaw, which is the correct bylaw for Needham, and then ob, obviously, we're hoping that will also pass the town meeting. So that's what's, that's the start of it tomorrow night. That's the start of the process. And it'll, it'll be an interesting process and, um, hopefully in the end, it'll be something that we can get part of.
That's great, Artie. Quick question is, do you have a schedule already set up or is that something that you're putting to, during the first meeting?
Tomorrow night, tomorrow night, we'll be talking about this, give the nights that people can, can meet the, what's the best for everyone.
Okay, great. Just to know when the public hearings are and, and, um, and then it'll be great to, to be able to get at our next meeting, to be able to get some feedback as to what the process is and where you are, some of us.
I'll, I'll be looking to every, every point, every node where there's some feedback available. Feedback will be coming to our, will be coming to the planning board because I'm gonna make sure that everyone's engaged as much as possible. Is that's the only way we can. Because that's the only way we can.
I had some, I had some earlier feedback. Lee, did you send that to Artie?
Yes, I saw that, Adam.
Not the, not the email uh that I sent this week. I sent it previously to uh Alex and Lee.
I don't know if.
And maybe I copied you, Natasha. I don't remember. I had to be careful because I didn't want to trigger the.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Um I I'll go back and check my emails and make sure I did forward it. If I didn't, I I I'm thinking I probably did, Adam, but I will double check it.
I just hope already, you know, that this go, you know, that this that the committee focuses on, you know, the the core, the core issues and doesn't get distracted into other issues that don't really relate to um to the challenge ahead of us.
Um I mean, I I'm fairly certain that's the goal. You know, what we're going to have to determine is, you know, when we're, when we're talking through the whole process, do we talk through the process which has to do with the billing codes related to additions and how that affects and how that affects then potentially a teardown versus maybe someone can do an addition without triggering the additional requirement for the whole rest of the house after you brought up the code because that starts to defeat some of the purpose of what people are have issues about. So we'll be talking about that tomorrow night.
Right, so good.
Again, and no, nothing will be discussed, nothing will, certainly nothing will be resolved tomorrow night. It's more a matter of, we're starting the process and and what do people want to start talking about? And I I have no doubt we could, we could pivot pivot along the ways and and perhaps that pivot means add additional items that we're looking at. But the main thing is that we, we have a pro, we have a process and we have the right people on the different, we have the right people within that committee that want to help look at different parts of that process. So I know some people on it that have strengths and and different strengths. And so hopefully those people will look at that part, that that metric that covers the, uses this one. But I I think we'll, I think we'll do okay. But we have to take it very seriously.
I think we created subcommittees, I think, for that particular piece. Not only, Artie, remember, um we did that for the um they have the, gosh, the environmental, when we were looking at a uh the green group, I can't remember the name of.
Well, when we did the housing plan, we had, we had.
And when we did the housing plan, we also did that because there are people that are um have a lot of uh knowledge in some areas and others, and that was a good way of sharing and making smaller groups for more information.
Yeah, so so no doubt, no doubt, we'll, yeah, no doubt, we'll be doing some of that. And in in doing so, we could perhaps um reach out and and talk to some people that aren't on the committees so somewhat easily. And Lee, you you would also mention that there is some money set aside that utilized to get some.
Yeah, well, we have, we have the planning funds that we, you know, that we, the town meeting appropriated. So any consultants and services that we need, we can pull out of that funding source.
Yeah, and I'm certainly happy to listen to anything that anyone, anything that has, anyone that has anything to say, you know, please never never hesitate reaching out in their thoughts.
And and Artie, one thing is um the ADU information that we just received is something to be taken into account when you think about the size of the houses. And Paul had sent an email. I don't know, Paul, if you um regarding a couple of the items, including um, you know, site plan review for ADUs and all of that. I didn't know if you just wanted to touch on those three points that you made.
Well, I was making those points, I believe, it's been a while since I sent that email. So uh I believe that email was to Chris Heap.
Yes.
Right, questions about site plan review and things like that, right? And um the current, our current bylaws. So the same as with the Dover Amendment projects, the same with the ADUs and the MBTA housing bylaws, we need to make sure that we understand our site plan review um so that.
Right, I was questioning, I was questioning whether um when we adopt a new bylaw to to adopt the amendments to the ADUs that are now required by state law. Um whether, whether we should put in a specific site plan review for ADUs similar to what we did for the for the um uh what, for the MBTA um zone where we set forth site plan review specifically in there for that. And uh I know that we do have it on our regen, on our list of of uh bu- bylaw changes that uh uh we, we want to have specific bylaws for Dover Amendment Site Plan Review. So that we don't get caught up in the the same problem that we had with sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue that our, our site plan review was clearer when when it comes to Dover Amendment. So I was just questioning whether we should do the same thing for the ADUs. I have not heard back from Chris, but we've got plenty of time for that, you know, when when not.
I would only, I don't know that I would necessarily, the whole point of this state statute is to make ADUs, you know, permissible and to remove some of the regulatory hurdles. And as we've seen with site plan review and other cases, it can be used to sabotage a process by affect, you know, by opponents. I would, you know, are there circumstances in which I would only really, I think, consider a site plan review process for detached, not not attached ADUs. And main, many, mainly, and mainly only in, I think, certain rare circumstances. Like if there was something right on a lot line, but I think if the zoning can be uh constructed in a way that ensures a reasonable setback, that that wouldn't even be a requirement. But I may be in the minority of the board on that.
Um I think you stated what was had, what was going through my mind as well.
So that's pretty rare. Let's celebrate that.
Oh, man, we're we're doing a lot better than that. Pre chairs. Uh but yeah, no, I I think that's something, you know, we're talking about the, you know, what are the requirements we're looking at? Like you said, we can't put something in there, some constraint that sabotages it. And we're looking at, you know, what's, what's the dimensional requirements for for a house, what are the lot requirements? And and then we have, you know, are there any special site plan reviews for that besides, is it meeting the dimensional requirements? Um what I can see is if, you know, do we want to take into account existing structures that are less than the dimensional requirements from the property line? That's where I can, certainly that's where I can see uh getting into some type of um more of a site plan review or or some requirements that wouldn't be in place if it met the dimensional requirements, the standard dimensional requirements. So I don't know where we're going with it. I have no clue at this point, but I think I'm, I think I'm quasi repeating what you were saying just then and.
Yeah. And I think that I brought it up.
I'm remembering now what my issue was with the site plan review. There was and I might be misremembering, but I think this is what it was. There's language in the new, in the new statute for the new ADUs that says that the, that the ADUs can be subject to clear and objective site plan criteria. Now, that's not something that we've had before. It could be argued that our site plan criteria that we currently have are not clear. And it could be argued that they're subjective to the planning board and not objective. And I questioned whether our site plan, our current site plan criteria would meet the statutory, the the new statutory requirement that our site plan criteria be clear and objective. And that's why I was questioning whether we needed to revise, at least when it came to the ADUs to um uh have either new site plan there or revise all of our site plan criteria so that uh you know, I I I can see where we have site plan review and the applicant is not happy with our decision about our site plan review. And so they challenge it based on our site plan criteria not, not being clear and objective.
Right.
So that's why I raised the issue for Chris Heap. As I said, um Chris has not responded to that email. Which I, you know, th- these are busy times for Chris, I know, so uh.
Right, it's just to keep everything in mind. That's why I brought it up. It's as Marty's starting this large group and the ADU is, you know, um part of the residential property. Go ahead, Paul. Did I interrupt you?
No, I I I I was just saying that there was something else in the new law that made me think that there's that that we don't have to rush to amend our bylaws.
Um. Well, I think that, I think it's effective. We, you know, could just walk into a building department and get, get a permit under the, under the new law.
Right.
But it's, it's all put into our dimensional requirements for lot coverage setbacks.
Correct. But like, for example, if somebody were to walk in to get a permit for a detached ADU, even though we have not amended our bylaws to allow for it, that can, that, that, that would not stop them. We don't, we, we don't need to amend our bylaws quickly in order to comply with the statute. It's kind of an automatic. They'll get their building permit. So um you know, if we feel that we don't have enough time to handle this for May, uh the, the board, the board is not um would not be violating the statute or have a concern about potentially ha- having a problem if it waited until next October, for example. Although, if we could do it quickly, it's probably a good idea to get it done in May.
My question, obviously, as, as Artie is, is going to be, you know, keeping aware of what Chris's response is and and ADUs. This isn't, ADUs are, and our response to the state's requirements, legislation and requirements is not part of the large house study committee's scope, correct?
No, it's not. The reason I brought it up is because as you're thinking about the sizes of houses on lots, thinking about possibilities of ADUs and a house, it's just keep it in mind, so.
Sure, because I think it's not that I don't think the committee, it's, I I I think it's, the scope will get too big for especially the timeframes that we're doing. This is a fourteen-person committee. That itself is going to be very hard to manage. And just, and trying to get so much, I think it's, it would just be, obviously, being aware and, you know, going in tandem and kind of thinking about you know, teardowns and or just, we we can think about ADU implementation and that. But I think the, the response that we need to, to have for either changing our site plan review, customizing it for it, our ADU, that should be done by the planning board itself.
No, absolutely. No, what I, what I was saying.
Whatever, it sounded like it was all.
No, what I, no, there are a couple of items there and they got jumbled up. One was
Okay.
As you're thinking about the large house and the sizes of houses on lots, keep in mind that ADUs may be coming into play, that that will affect the, the massing on the site. Secondary to that, there was an, an ADU piece that I brought up to Paul because he was questioning um you know, some of the, the rules that were passed by the state about site plan review and all of that. So that got jumbled up with it. So it's two separate things. Artie, it's just, my thought was, don't forget that ADUs uh we passed all of the zoning for the ADUs and that that's gonna, there's gonna be that emassing on the site and then also for the solar, right, in some cases. Um as you're thinking about all of these pieces going together on a site.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. What, what, this is more of a curiosity now because although at some point I need to know definitively, on the ADUs, they are a detached structure. Would those have to abide by the fifteen-foot maximum height?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
They will.
And the square footage.
Yeah, the square footage, the lot cover.
That, that's why, that's of right, you know, that it's not going to be over fifteen feet. It's not going to be, I think it's nine hundred square feet. Is that what?
Nine hundred.
Then that sets limits so that people aren't building, you know, three thousand square foot ADUs in their backyards.
Yeah, and then lock coverage, of course. And.
Right, and there's setbacks, lock coverage, but but recently, we've done solar ADU. And then if for these really small lots, you just have to think about proportion of house to the other pieces that, 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 you know, that could also be part of um the lot.
Sure, and yeah, and the reality of what could possibly be built, built like on.
Right, the reality of what could, before you start putting a lot of constraints.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, and then, and then if this large house review is primarily focusing on SRB, maybe perhaps in general residence, if it's primarily focusing on that, that area, um you know, what do we, do we, do we look at, you know, looking at lot size? Some of the lot sizes within those areas are larger than the normal ten thousand square foot. Now, how we look at that lot, those lot sizes in comparison to the rest, rest of SRB and how do, and how do we, do we let that gauge engage anything within our decisions? So I don't know. The question is, the answer is, I don't know how we're going to look at all this, but I do know that we'll be looking at everything and and how we're going to measure it. I don't even know yet. You know, we keep talking about the FAR. I have no idea what ultimately is going to be measuring it. I often, I often, and I don't see FAR as it, but you never know when, once you get the meeting going. I just don't know what's going to happen.
So the other things, so just from, from the um housing and the, and the MBT communities groups that you own and everything, when you have such a big group in order to make it efficient, right, you just have to um keep that allow for these subgroups to happen so that you can get, gather more information because, you know, you have a certain deadlines for for what, you'll create a deadline for what you want to do, but make it as efficient as possible with as much information and as much public process.
Absolutely. Yeah, I want to make sure the public knows as much as possible. I don't want to, well, I mean, no matter what we do, we're still going to wind up the eleventh hour. People have no clue what we're talking about. That's just, that goes, that goes without saying. That's the nature of it.
The other piece that we had was a lot of good communication by the town. So that's another piece is making sure that you continue that. And I'm sure, Lee, you're going to be working with um, you know, the communications group because that was really helpful as well, even though there are always going to be people that are very busy and don't. But but just in general, communication and then creating a really um s- strong schedule and and that that we stick to, so.
Yeah, what's great is that Lee, Lee, you're, you're, you're great and your, your your department is, is excellent as far as what you do and how you do it and making sure that things are, go, go by, I guess I'll use the word go by the book to make sure that everything's on task, everything is on schedule, everything's noticed.
Yeah, great.
Much appreciated.
So, so we have one item of correspondence, um Greg Molno from December eleventh. Um and is there any other correspondence?
No, that's it on correspondence.
Um any other final items?
I'd just like to add that since we added a couple of items to this agenda, you know, we, we got your signatures on the um decision that we issued for the fitness facility, but I need your signatures now on these two de minimis changes um and the A and R plan, I'm sorry. Um so I, I'll leave this material on the desk in the planning office. And if you guys can stop by this week and sign the um, the, the, the decisions and the plan, that would be great.
What time is the office closed?
Um, we're here till five o'clock.
I'm not going to be able to, I'm not going to be able to get in.
Well, um, I'm, I'm going to be here tomorrow because I have a, I have this, the meeting at, I can, I some of my going to town hall. Um I can, I'll be here till maybe six fifteen tomorrow, if you want to do it then.
I can't.
All I need is.
Madam Chair, uh uh Lee, uh I'm a, I'll be notarizing whoever is going to be the lead signature. So please make sure I'm here because I need to see you signing it and authorize, I need to know that you're signing it of your free will as a notary. So please make sure that I'm here. I'm going to be in tomorrow from eight thirty to five. That's uh Wednesday and the same on Thursday. Actually, on Thursday, I'll probably be here. I will be here until eight o'clock because I have it. Well, until, yeah, seven o'clock because the ZBA meeting. So if you can come either tomorrow or after, then I can notarize for that person. So I need just one of you to be here while I'm here so I can notarize those documents. And also, there's one document that's already signed, Lee. We also, I did not see the person, the people who were signing it. So either you wait until Alex can, who did witness you guys signing that document, but as a notary, I can't notarize that. So either we can make another document for you guys.
Actually, Daphne, I'll take a look at the language again when I see it. I think that if I show up and I tell you in person that that is my signature on the document, that is sufficient for you to.
Apps, then if that's the case, uh you know, I'll look into that clerk, but I, you know, I, I I know all you guys personally, so that's not an issue. I don't need to see your driver's license or anything like that, but I do need to see that you signed it. So.
Calendar. I'm going to put it on my calendar to stop by the planning board office around eight.
Perfect. All right.
So, Daphne, I just want to get the, sorry, second, I just want to get your times again. Today until five, tomorrow till?
Today until five, but I, I have to go to another gig, so it's really, it's like fixed, five o'clock, I'm out. And then tomorrow, I will be here from eight thirty to five. And then on Thursday, I'm going to be here from eight thirty till the beginning of the ZBA meeting, which is at seven o'clock. So that would, that would work for me. Don't come at seven because my meeting starts at seven thirty and I get into, you know, the whole meeting, you know, hybrid meeting issues, but you know, I'll be here on those two days. So Paul, give me, well, whoever signed that document, you know, the other one that has three signatures?
Oh, the, no, there were five signatures on that document, but if Paul's going to be here tomorrow, maybe we just uh and if that's convenient for you, why don't we just get him to, why, why don't we just notarize his signature? Uh, and if that's convenient for you, why don't we just get him to, why, why don't we just notarize his signature? Um, on all these documents. And, um, if, if he, and he can let you know that he actually signed that other document, you can notarize it, the one that's already been signed.
All right.
Are we talking about the documents we signed at the last planning board meeting?
Yeah, you signed a, a blank sheet for me on the fitness facility, 'cause I was trying to keep not, not bothering you guys over the holiday weekends. And then we added all these extra items to the agenda, so that was a plan that went out the window. Um, so Paul, you'll be here tomorrow around eight thirty?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thirty and nine.
Okay.
Don't the rest of us have to show up then and?
You need to, no, there's a lead person. But you'll need one for the notary.
Okay.
I also, you have a hands raised from a Jeff's phone.
I have no idea who that is.
Do you want me to promote or?
Well, this is not a public meeting, I mean, unless there's something.
At this item.
No, we have noth, we have nothing else on our agenda.
So, I, I, I would, the earliest I'd be able to come in and sign would be, uh, like December thirtieth, if you want me to. If you only need four, that's fine.
Um, I'd, I'd like to get it done sooner, just 'cause I wanna get the stuff recorded over to the clerk and not. So, if we can get, get the other four to do it.
I'll, I'll come over this, I'll come over this afternoon, so.
I'll try to come over this afternoon too, 'cause I'm in Boston the other.
Yeah, I get it, yeah, I can, I can come over now.
All right, well, I'll see you guys a little bit later, all right.
Nice seeing you, Daphne.
Motion to adjourn.
Very good, bye.
And, and a second for the.
Second.
Okay, so Justin, the motion second by Paul, all in favor, say aye, um, Adam.
Aye.
Justin.
Aye.
Artie.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
I have the chair, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, happy holidays.
Happy holidays to all.
Yep.